...fourteenth session of the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee. I would like to welcome all of you to our meeting and thank you for joining us, those of you in the audience, and those of you who are watching on TV and streaming on your computer and whatever you do on your iPhone. I would also like to give a very, very warm welcome to a very special group of young men and young women in our audience this evening who I believe are going to be making a presentation. And even before you begin, I would like to commend you for the extraordinary work you've done, for your leadership of your community, and for the role model that you provide for your peers, and I might also add, for the adults in the community. We welcome your presence here this evening and look forward to what you have to share with us. So, thank you for being with us this evening. The agenda this evening is a little bit short of unusual, but that doesn't mean that it isn't full of important items that we need to consider. I would like to move right ahead unless there are concerns amongst members of the committee regarding the times allocated to various items. If not, then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 3rd, 2013. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of December 3rd, 2013.
Mr. O'Brien moves. Is there a second?
Second.
There's happy seconds. Is there a discussion? Doesn't appear to be any then. All those in favor of approving the minutes of Tuesday, December 3rd, 2013, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you very, very much. Announcements. Superintendent Garrett?
Do you want to go public comment first?
First.
I'll do mine after the students.
Sure, sure. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to step to the microphone and share some thoughts with us this evening? Yes, ma'am. Please approach the microphone. Please speak into the microphone. First, please tell us who you are. And I am going to give you three minutes. I will try not, I will not go like this, but I will ask you at roughly three minutes to please stop.
Yeah, I'll keep my comments.
Please proceed.
My name is Jen McFlambeau. I'm a parent of a Fort River third grader.
Speak up.
A parent of a third grader in Fort River. And I just wanted to express my strong support for the policy of schools. And I thought, I know that there's an ongoing debate, and there was recently a community forum on WHMP which I hope you all had a chance to listen to. I think my partner sent links to that podcast so we could hear that wide range of conversations that that was very helpful. I just wanted to add a couple of things to the debate. There's a lot of conversation about what kind of knowledge do we have about what policies work and...
A little technical support.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just wanted to add, there are a couple of things swirling around the conversation about the nut restriction, and what do we actually know about what would work and what's a good way to manage nut allergies? And I just wanted to read a little bit from a letter that was written by a woman named Jan Hansen who had hoped to have something in the Gazette but didn't get printed, so I just wanted to read a couple pieces from it, and I have copies I can share with all of you so you can see the full letter. Jan Hansen has for over fifteen years had experience working in the area of food allergies and is the founder of Educating for Food Allergies. Her expertise covers a broad range of issues pertinent to food allergies, including an understanding of the physiology of allergic reactions and applications anaphylaxis, current research for new treatments, and professional guidelines and recommendations for food allergy management. So, that just gives you an idea of her background. And there are two issues I thought were important to just make some comments on that she addresses in her letters. First is sort of the seriousness and significance of nut allergies in particular. And she quotes from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention in their voluntary guidelines for managing food allergies in schools, saying that "in the U.S., fatal or near fatal reactions are most often caused by peanuts and tree nuts." And according to a 2011 Journal of Allergy and Clinical Immunology report, 77,000 children are seen in the U.S. emergency rooms annually for food-induced anaphylaxis. Here in Massachusetts, the Department of Public Health reported that for the academic year 2009 to 2010, 198 students received epinephrine to treat anaphylaxis during school day. She says, "Ms. Baker indicates that only 24 school-aged children have died from food-induced anaphylaxis from 2000-2012. I would assert that one death is too many and that each episode of anaphylaxis is a traumatic, life-threatening event for the person experiencing it and for those individuals who witnessed this medical emergency." And then the second point I want to just talk a little bit about is that there's been a lot of conversation about the idea that we just need to respond to allergic reactions. We have to have epinephrine injectors everywhere, everybody should be trained for that. Of course, that's an important step, but really, I think that what other professionals besides Jan Hansen has been recommending is we need to think about preventing allergic reactions as opposed to just responding to them. And just a couple comments on that. She says, "The CDC also warns that children may not always exhibit overt and visible allergic symptoms after ingesting an allergen, which may make early recognition and treatment of a reaction difficult. This is particularly concerning when coupled with the fact that a delay in receiving epinephrine is a known risk factor for fatal anaphylaxis. Even more concerning is the fact that epinephrine is not foolproof, a tragic reality faced by a family in California this summer." Ms. Baker, she's again commenting on something that Erin Baker had written. Ms. Baker stated in an editorial that "to manage food allergies, the Amherst School District should follow the recommendation advised by the CDC and FAIR," which is to have adults in school setting, in the school setting, trained to recognize the symptoms of anaphylaxis and have epinephrine injectors on hand with staff knowledgeable in use on how to use the device. Although both organizations cited, state that this approach is necessary for effective emergency response, what Ms. Baker neglected to mention is that both of these organizations recommend strict avoidance of the food allergen as a primary management strategy. This is the only way to prevent an allergic reaction. In fact, the CDC states that the guidelines were designed to shift the focus from food allergy management from response to prevention, so really highlighting the importance of preventing the allergic reaction, not just having, you know, the epinephrine pens ready as soon as they notice that a student might be having an anaphylactic response. I just want to end with her comment that she applauds the Amherst School District for the decision to ban nut products from the school environment. So, I hope that this is helpful to you. She, it looks like she has a consulting business that she could, you know, help inform us even more about what would be helpful for managing nut allergies in the schools. And I have copies for you.
Thank you. If you would pass the copies out or make them available via the superintendent, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak this evening? Not seeing anyone, then we'll proceed to the next item, which is announcements from the superintendent.
Sure. And I think what I'd love to do, if it's okay, is if I start with the students and then I can do a few announcements after. So, I'd love to have our students maybe come up to the front row. We're fortunate to have our, four of our MCN students here tonight. We also have Sheri Abbott and Mary Custard and Kim Stender and Marta Guevara, who are all instrumental in planning this wonderful conference that we hosted this year. I also want to acknowledge our veterans, our MCN veterans who played a critical role in planning this conference, and then all of you for attending and doing the hard work and then for coming forward and representing the group tonight. So, I'll turn it over to you and whoever starts. Excellent.
Hello. My name is Lonery Thomas. I'm a sophomore.
Speak up, please.
You can, yeah, you can move it right up there. There you go.
Hello. My name is Lonery Thomas. I'm a sophomore here. And first of all, I'd just like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to host the MCN conference and meet students from all over the country. And thirty students from MCN attended, as well as a large number of staff. And personally, I'd like to say that the experience of the conference was life-changing for me because it gave me a whole new outlook on education and the opportunities that I do have and not to take those for granted. So, thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Michaela Bowen and I'm a senior at Amherst High School this year. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about my experience at the conference. And being a person of color, it's really important to be surrounded by those who are going through similar struggles and similar obstacles in high school and in education in general. And it was really important for me to see that I'm not the only one who is facing these obstacles and that there are people, there are students like me around the entire nation who are combating the same things as I am but are also able to look at it through different lenses and give different ideas to us about what we can do in our community while we can give the same to them. And so, for me, that was a really important aspect of being able to go to the conference.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Jocelyn Cruz. I am a junior at Amherst Regional High School, and I just want to talk about how we came up with our action plan. And we basically met in a group of students from different schools all around the country. And we all shared our ideas on how we can improve our education system in our own schools. And it was really interesting to see, like, what different struggles they had in their schools as opposed to like what we have here in our school, because a lot of them had different things that they were trying to change. And then after that, we met with our own, like, our own students, our own classmates. And we all talked about our own, we all put our ideas together to make up an action plan. And then we, every single school that attended made a poster, and we did a gallery walk, and we saw all the different action plans that they were going to make. So, we decided to work with fifth graders from a nearby elementary school to help them with their studies and just get along with them and get to know them better. So, yeah.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Katya Correa. I'm a senior at Amherst here. And as Jocelyn was saying, basically, the, at MCN, it was very nice to, like, hear the ideas from different schools, to know what they wanted to do. But it was really interesting that most of all of our ideas, like, combined, as we were doing the gallery walk, like, a lot of people thought about mentoring students. And since we had already had the mentoring program for eighth graders here, we thought about what we could do to help students more because we feel like eighth grade does help, but it's kind of at a point where, like, children are kind of, have one path that they're going into. So, we thought about, like, when we were children, when we wished that we had people that were there who could, like, put us in the right path and, like, start putting great ideas into our heads, like, you know, you should start these classes, not when it's, like, already too late. So, we thought fifth grade would be a great year because it's right before you're about to leave elementary school. So, it's like, you know, starting to put the good thoughts in their heads while they're younger, like, oh, you should try these classes and, like, not try them because you have to, but try them because it's good, like, and you know, like, honors classes, a lot of times, there's pressure on honor classes, but not everybody can succeed in honors classes. So, I think if kids start thinking at a younger age, like, you know, maybe I can do this, like, I truly can, because, you know, I was mentored before by people who probably did struggle in ninth and 10th grade and couldn't do honors classes, but then by their senior year, they were taking all honors. So, today, we went to the fifth grade class. We, our first school that we did was Fort River. We plan on hopefully branching out to Cocker Farm and Wildwood in the future. So, we went to Fort River, and for today, we spent about an hour with them. And for, just for today, since we wanted, like, break the ice with all those students because they didn't, we had gone before, me, Michaela, and another member, Shaya, to Fort River to explain what our, what our MCN was and what the CTA program, Courage to Act program, the mentoring program, was. And they seemed very exciting. So, today, we came in and we played Big Wind Blows, which is like a icebreaker, which is just like, you just like, say never, you just say a statement, a true statement about yourself, and see who else has everything. Like, some people were like, I have cats, I have dogs, like, in, like, different languages, been to different countries. So, it's kind of like a way for us to get to know the children more and for them to get to know us. And then we just played, like, Fish, Fish Across My Ocean, and then after, we sat down and they were thanking us, and we thanked them for letting us go there and telling them what we plan on doing next, which is like mentoring them basically and helping them to make better decisions for themselves and to kind of open their eyes to different possibilities because we want to be able to close the achievement gap.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. So, was it the best? I'm sorry.
Yeah. It was the best. Yeah. It was very, it was very nice to work with, with the children.
That's great. So, I'm sorry. I'm just asking, I was saying something when I'm not supposed to. I apologize.
Comments, questions from members of the committee? Catherine?
I want to thank you for coming tonight and thank you for, you know, as Kip said, being such leaders in the community and in your schools. And I guess one of the questions I had about your visit to Fort River was, or sort of, what is the plan going forward? Will you meet with students individually? Are you going to meet with groups of students now? How do you imagine it working?
Well, as we, we're kind of still trying to figure that out because we do have enough students, MCN students, I believe, to work with the fifth grades because there are three fifth grade classes. But most likely, we would like to kind of, like, there probably will be some partnering up with, like, two or three MCN members with, like, four fifth grade students, you know? And I don't know how we're going to split that up exactly, but we're going back in February, and by then, we'll, like, know, and we'll have, like, things that we want to do with them, like, individual or group, like, each, usually how we didn't strive was, like, the group, the member, MCN members kind of picked what they wanted to do for their group, like, we did as a class, but we're not sure for exactly how we want to do that, but we'll figure that out.
Can I, and the other question I had was, how, how will you be able to, uh-huh, what do you need in order to be able to also go to Wildwood and Cocker Farm? Because I'm sure that they would love us as well. Is it time? Is it resources?
Well, for us, I think it's just time because currently, we're just taking one C period out of every month to go to Fort River and because a lot of us have after-school programs and transportation can be an issue, and the elementary schools get out at different times than we do, and our schedules don't kind of clash with theirs. We have to figure out those type of things. And because Fort River is the closest to us and it's easiest to get to, that's where we chose. And a good amount of MCN scholars went to Fort River and know the building and have, and have some type of connection with the students there. So, that's why we chose Fort River first. But we have also gotten, you know, the other elementary schools have asked that we come there and also mentor their fifth graders.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Yes, Lawrence. Sorry.
So, I too want to applaud your efforts. It's been a while since I was your age, but I'm quite certain that I would not have had the courage to do what you've done. So, I have a question about ongoing relationships with the students who came to our conference. Is there, is there anything established? Have you folks been in touch with your, with your peers who you conferenced with? Is there, like, a system? Are you, it would be great, it sounds like you established some great relationships, and it would be also great, I think the mentoring you're doing is fantastic, but I think it would also be great, it sounds like, to continue on with that relationship with the other people at the conference. Is that something that seems like it's due?
The only real contact that we've been able to have, we have, I mean, I have gotten a few cell phone numbers and, you know, we follow each other on Instagram and maybe we're friends on Facebook. But, I mean, I haven't had the opportunity to really talk with them about, you know, the programs that they're developing at their schools and whether they're following through, whether, whether, they haven't really asked if we're following through. It's just, you know, regular social media, just seeing, just having people who live in maybe Wisconsin or on the other side of the country, just to see what they're doing. And maybe they'll, if we post something about it on Facebook, then they'll see that and respond and say, oh, we were there for that. And, yeah, that could be a way to kind of start negotiations.
I do have somebody in MCN that I ended up being close with and having wonderful conversations about what she wanted, what her individual plans were for the school and, like, kind of the world. And I do still keep in touch with her, and like, every once in a while, we ask, like, how's the progress going on your MCN, on your action plan around the school? And that's like, it's always nice to hear that people continue on because it's like, you always start the, like, there's a flame that starts it, but you need to, like, get the fire going.
Right.
That's why, and also with the mentoring program, we want to, like, actually be able to be their mentors. And like, it's harder for, like, seniors who are leaving this year because we just started it, but hopefully, like, the incoming freshmen that will be coming next year that will be joining MCN, that they can be with these students. And like, each year, the fifth graders will be moving on, but hopefully, when they come back into eighth grade, they'll want to go into Strive to get some more mentoring and, like, they can still have that connection with us.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, thanks for coming here tonight and sharing it. I think it's, it sounds like a great, the mentoring sounds great. I think the fifth graders are really lucky to have you. But one of the things you said that I thought would also, I don't know if it's possible, but you mentioned the gallery walk. And I was wondering, is there any, were there pictures taken or video or anything of that that could be shared with us? Because I would love to see that. I mean, it's such a, that's a great idea.
We had a PowerPoint. We had a PowerPoint. I have 400 pictures.
For Mary. It'd be great, maybe, I mean, if Deb can... I have a shorter, I cut it down to about 100. That would be lovely. Thank you. And I'll share.
Okay. That'd be great. I thought, thank you, Mary.
We have video of our students presenting. Yeah. Because on the last day, we kind of, before every, because every, some people had to leave, like, early in the morning, some people left the night before, so we kind of just all had breakfast. And we had a PowerPoint that they, that our mentors put together that night before the morning. So, it was, like, really nice to kind of see the different pictures with, like, us meeting with Rosa Clemente, who was a best speaker, with Calvin Terrell. We had Ginkas Park, and then we had...
Turn to the microphone.
And we had Unuomi Genie Moss. I don't know if I'm saying her name wrong, but she was a storyteller, and that was, like, very, it was very, very good experience, and it was good that we had pictures and videos to keep the memories.
Great. It's great.
Thanks. Everyone's saying thanks for coming, and I truly thank you as well. This is really interesting. I had a comment and then a question. I think maybe consider if you're still doing the design of the program to follow the children even through sixth and seventh instead of keep starting at fifth, because really, the power will be in the relationship that you create with the children. And if you're only going once a month and you're only starting right now, it's really not a lot of time. So, just think about that. I know that logistics might be complicated and it would be hard to do both, but if you could figure it out so that you had a multi-year relationship or that, so some of you who aren't seniors could do the sixth grade next year, it's just something to think about. So, a question I had, and anyone can answer if an answer comes into their head, is what, what did you learn at the conference that surprised you or helped you with some, you know, particular issues that you're challenged by?
So, one thing that I learned from the conference, from, was from some kids in Chicago. And what I learned from them was despite, like, their environment of where they're from, it wasn't the safest environment, it wasn't the best, it wasn't as pleasant as it is here in Amherst, but yet, all of those students had, across the board, all of them had AP classes full. They're all in the top of their classes, doing the best that they could to get a very good education. And so, that made me look back at what I'm doing here and to see, just like, look at my performance and my academics and try to improve on that.
That's great. Thank you.
So, like Lonery said, that they all had really, most of them had really difficult environments they were living in. And in my group, there was these two students from New Jersey who said that they were struggling with teachers not giving them permission to take AP classes because over there, they need permission, like, they need a sign slip. And they were all signing up for AP classes and honors classes except they weren't being given the permission to take it. So, that's what they were struggling with. And I found that very surprising because here, I'd never heard of anything like that.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to comment on that? No? Kath, is that your question?
Yes.
Anyone else? I just have two very quick things I'd like to say before you leave. First of all, when young people, my experience is that when young people step out and take risks and take chances that they may be a little nervous about, it's always nice to know that there are people who have your back. And I just want to commend your four adult mentors for having their back. I think that's very, very important, and it allows these young men and women to do what they've done. And I think, I want to thank you. Secondly, I want to thank you again, the four of you and the other members of your, of your group, because in the past two months, I've heard on several occasions now, people, both adults and young people remark about situations where young people have demonstrated a very deep compassion, a non, an unconditional compassion for their peers. And I just find that just really remarkable and so overwhelmingly positive. I just want to commend you for what underlies your work, which is basically an unconditional compassion concern about your peers. And I think that's, that's just incredibly marvelous. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
And I'll just say one more thing. Just, I want to, I want to thank you all very much for working with our younger students. Just taking your time when you could be doing a whole lot of other things to make a difference in the lives of some of our younger students means a lot to me, it means a lot to our community and to everyone, all of our staff. So, thank you for choosing that as your action plan. You will make a difference. And again, for stepping up and representing Amherst, bright, strong, willing to go the distance, and I really appreciate that. Again, as Kip said, it's never easy to step up and to really be persistent to make a difference, and you all are. So, thank you. And you're going to have a blast with the elementary students. I can guarantee it.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You know, I think, yeah, I think we should. And my comments I can hand out. People can ask questions later, so I think Andy might be better there.
Okay. Next on the agenda, I'm going to skip the committees because I think we can deal with those committees fairly quickly at the end, rather unusual this time around. And Maria can share her comments later, but Andy Steinberg is here. You all know why he's here. I'm going to ask Andy to step forward, and I'm not sure whether you want to do the sitting down or standing up, Andy.
Sit down.
Sit down. That's fine.
You can take it out as well.
One of our tasks this evening is for, to hear what Andy, as Chair of the Regional School District Planning Board, has to tell us regarding the status of the work of the Regional School District Planning Board, particularly actions that have taken place during the last month and a half or so. You have a letter, you should have a letter, I hope, in front of you, from Andy to Christine Lynch from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I'm going to basically stop there and let Andy pick it up, talk about the letter and how that gets us to this point this evening.
Okay, well, thank, if I can correctly. Kip, thank you. I hope that I have it positioned so everybody can hear. I know that several members of the Regional School District Planning Board are also on the Regional School Committee, and so you have been receiving regular reports from Michael and Kip and Catherine and Trevor about what the board has been doing. So, and I appreciate that they have kept you informed. This has been a long, two-year effort, and I really have to say that working with the, with the group that is the Regional School District Planning Board has been really something special because it's a magnificent group of people who are very thoughtful and hardworking. We began with our shared experience about the current region, the region that, of which you're on the school committee, and recognized as a group that the towns, the four towns have really achieved a lot together educationally for our kids because we have come together as a region for our middle school and high school. And that experience and knowledge about how effectively, over a long period of time, since, I think, 1953, the current region has worked, has really kept us focused on what we've had to think about for elementary schools. And the, I think that the board had long ago come... And the, I think that the board had long ago, come, the Regional School District Planning Board had come to the conclusion that we can achieve a similar result for our elementary schools with a regional structure, and that that would not only enhance elementary education in our towns if it's done right, but it would also enhance the work in our secondary schools that you oversee on a regular basis. And that therefore, it was a win-win on both the elementary and on the secondary levels if we could achieve regionalization. We also had to recognize some challenges and have been working very hard to look, to recognize those challenges. One is that we all know that all four towns have great elementary schools now, and that it is incumbent upon us to show to voters in each of our towns and the four towns collectively that how education will be better as a result of coming together as a regional process, and have taken a lot of time focusing on the educational component. And we appreciate Ms. Garrick's assistance in developing some, an educational plan, a long-range educational plan. We also had to look at how we can assure our voters of several things, but mostly that the schools, that the elementary schools, if we regionalize, will remain of high quality, that there will be, that they will remain in each community, each town, is a source for community pride, and that they will remain as community centers in each of the schools. We also know that there are legal issues that would have to be addressed if we went forward with regionalization. One is governance, which is a very difficult issue, because we need to assure that we comply with the one man, one vote principle, that our one person, one vote principle may be more correctly stated these days. Though, we have to go back to some Supreme Court decisions of many years ago where it came from. And it balanced that against the need that each community has, each town has, for representation in a governance process. We had to look at the financial issues. So these are not minor issues, not issues that we've at all glossed over as we've worked forward. As you know, we first explored the possibility of a separate region, a PK to sixth region. And last time I spoke before this committee, we were talking about how we would move forward with governance if we ended up as two separate regions. For a variety of reasons, we ended up then shifting our focus to the topic that's in the letter that Kip was referring to a few minutes ago, which was the discussion of our December 5th region and the resolution that came from the December 5th region. And if you look at that letter in particular, if you look in the second, what's an indented second paragraph, which is the motion that was passed at the December 5th meeting, which you'll see as we were taught, we have evolved into thinking that the best approach would be a hybrid region, because a lot of, a lot of members of the board felt that a region that covered grades from pre-kindergarten to 12 was really the most logical form of region. But we also had to respect the fact that a town may choose that it could not go forward to have its elementary school within that kind of a region. So a hybrid region, what we're talking about is similar to what's in the Mohawk Regional District, where most towns are members for PK to 12, but there are a couple of towns up there that for a variety of reasons are members for some other configuration, but essentially keeping elementary separate. And as you see in our region, we concluded that we would like to proceed if at least three towns participate in a pre-kindergarten to sixth level, that that would be sufficient as long as one of those was Amherst, to allow the kind of hybrid region. We didn't know if the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education would accept that or would consider that form, and, or at least would consider it without us having to go through a very difficult step of going to the legislature for special legislation, which was part of the effort that created the Mohawk District. And then we also, as you see in the, in the resolution, did talk about the fact that if a town is not a member of the region for grades pre-kindergarten to six, whether there would be a possibility of that town still sharing the superintendent and central office. And the conclusion that we came to was that it's something that ought to be considered if we get to that point, it ought to be considered at a future date, but we very much wanted to include it in the resolution so that it was in everybody's mind that it is an issue that would need to be resolved by future school committees. So we needed the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for comment and encouragement to go forward. And so I sent the letter to Ms. Lynch, and I still have not gotten back the written response. I did talk with her last week by telephone in a quite lengthy conversation. And she informed me that we would be receiving a letter summarizing what she was about to tell me, but then she went ahead and spent about an hour telling me what the department had come to. And she explained the process and said that she had consulted with the legal department, and she consulted with the assistant commissioner, who has to sign off on all of the recommendations to the commissioner about regionalization and restructuring of regions. And the second thing that she advised me is, is that they do not want to set a precedent that a hybrid region will always be considered. They want to reserve the option to consider those kinds of creative structuring on a case-by-case basis, but with their knowledge of the structure here, with our current region, the length of time that it's been working together, and the fact that we have the superintendent also working with two of the elementary schools, the fact that we have two school unions participating in the process in addition to the region, and the complexity of it, that in, given the totality of circumstances, that they will consider it for us. And the second thing that she indicated was that, and this is a technical detail, that since there would have to be two votes, one to change the regional agreement and create the regional agreement that allows for this, and the second vote is votes for, for towns to choose whether they're participating or not, that we structure it, this came from her legal department, that we structure it so that towns would be voting in the second vote, if the, if the agreement is amended, to vote to choose not to participate as opposed to the other way around. But it really did not significantly affect the result of what we were proposing in the motion that you see in the letter that I sent to Ms. Lynch. And the rest of the conversation had to go through some of the various combinations of complexity that have to be dealt with on issues such as the governance and financial issues that I referred to earlier. And we talked a lot about that, but it's very clear that the department had no opinion on the subjects, they just recognized the complexity and were assuming that we were prepared to set up a process to continue to address those questions as we go forward to make a proposal to them. The other thing that is in the motion, as you look at it, is, it says at the very beginning, "to amend the current 7-12 agreement." And that is different from what we had previously been engaged at, because in the previous process that we've been working up until now, it has been a process established by the Chapter 71 of Mass General Laws to amend, to create a new region. We always knew that if we were going to end up with a region that would encompass all grades, it could be done by creating a new region or amending the current regional agreement. And the Regional School District Planning Board talked about that, and we came to the conclusion that we would recommend to you, and did so in the motion, that it be done by amending the current regional agreement. And there were several reasons for doing that. One is that it would give the responsibility of the process to you who have been working with reg, with the regional concept for quite some period of time. It would allow you to appoint a committee to assist, which I'm going to come back to in a moment, and the committee is a committee that you could determine the composition. It would not have to be structured under the strict rules of the Chapter 71, the creation of a new region, which can be very restrictive. It would allow us to consider in Amherst, any proposal at our representative town meeting, whereas if we created a new region, we would have to have a town-wide special election and an election using the entire process of all of the polling places in the, in the town, would have to incur the costs of doing so. And it would provide some possibilities for the superintendent's staff and for you as a, as a district, to support the process. I don't think that there's a lot of investment that's going to be needed at this point. There will be some investment, and there, we have no grant money left within our process. And so that was very much on the minds of the Regional School District Planning Board. So that's basically where we are in, in making this recommendation to you for what we think is going to be a more flexible and better process. So the recommendations are to ask you to take responsibility for the process from the Regional School District Planning Board and to amend the current, consider it as an amendment to the current regional agreement, to appoint a committee as you determine to be appropriate. We did poll our members, and I asked them to get back to me as to whether there are any current members who would not be willing to serve on a committee if you asked them to do so. And none of the 12 current members responded to me to indicate that they would not be willing to continue to serve on a committee if you appointed a committee. And I might just want to add that we did talk with gentleman Mac Reed, who is the, involved with the Acton-Boxborough process, which was very similar to this, because Acton-Boxborough is a regional district for secondary schools. And they started the process the way we did, and the Acton-Boxborough district ended up taking it on as a, as an amendment to their regional agreement. And Mr. Reed, who had been involved in the process throughout, said that he felt that it was beneficial because it allowed the school committee to appoint some additional members, that they did continue, what was the, six, because it's three from each town, but they were able to add some staff and some other citizens who they felt were appropriate that would help widen the participation in the process and bring more people into the process and a wider range of views. And they were, last year, successful in getting the amendment approved and completing the process in creating the two-town PK to 12 district that they were after doing. And I guess that the last thing that I just want to point out is that if you make the decision to take this on and you do give it to a committee, you have a very active role that you need to play, because you are amending your regional agreement at that point. And the current regional agreement is very specific, that it can only go to the voters in the four towns at their town meetings at a recommendation of the regional school committee on a two-thirds vote. So that if you ask a committee to assist you and give you a draft of a regional agreement, it still is your responsibility to then take that recommendation and to decide whether it is appropriate yourselves and to do so by the supermajority that is set forward in the current regional agreement. So if that, Mr. Franch, I'll just turn it back to you, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Before we go on, Andy, as always, is more modest than he should be. We would not be at this point, two years after the start, without his leadership. I don't know where we'd be without your leadership, Andy, so I want to thank you. We're not, our work's not finished yet, but I do want to thank you very, very much. It's been my practice to ask the committee, before we go any further on issues such as this, to have a motion before, and then have further discussion. But I think in light of the fact that what you've given, shared with us is essentially a capsulation of two years of work, I think I'd like to open it up for questions from the members first, and then proceed to the motion, if that's okay with folks. There are four-ninths of this committee are on the Regional School District Planning Board, so there is some, some experience there, but nevertheless, a lot of work has gone into this to get to tonight. So I'm sure even those of us who are on the planning board may have questions. So Michael, let me begin with you and work our way around. Go ahead.
Thank you, Andy. I just have a question about the recommendation with the two votes, since we haven't had time to process that. But the way the concept works is that basically three towns would be in for pre-K 12, and one would have option not to. But if it, if the sequencing of the two-town votes were to happen, all four towns would vote about creating a pre-K 12 region, and all four towns would have to vote in the affirmative to make it happen, so you would create a region. And then the subsequent vote, it's possible, given the December 5th meeting, that you would have two towns that wanted to remain the pre-K 6 carve-out. So it seems like it would actually be more, it would make more sense to do it in reverse, because you can't take away the amend, the amending of the regional agreement, but it's null and void based on our concept if two towns want to opt out. Correct?
That is correct. You know, I've thought about that issue, and I think that it's something that the commit, if you take over the process and appoint a committee, that the committee needs to determine. In my conversation with Ms. Lynch, it sort of came from her with the thought that we would be starting with the amendment of the regional agreement, and the regional agreement would have a provision, and I was trying to play this out as I was talking with her and think this through, that would say something like, if amended, then three of the towns would have the right by a specific date to take a vote to determine that their elementary grades would not participate in the region for those grades. And that if two, and it would further provide that if two towns were then to make that decision, that the region would continue as a 7-12 region only. That was, of course, just one of many scenarios that we might think about.
Right. I think, just to jump in, if I can...
I think that there are others, and I don't, I think that the committee ought to be looking at all of them.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we were to go forward, I would recommend, if we're laying out the process for the town, and I... out the process for the town, and it's whoever follows up with Christine Lynch about it, but it seems like if you amend a regional agreement, you know, the work that has to be done between tonight's vote, if we were to approve it, and going to town meeting, is creating an amended regional agreement, which has different governance, different financing, different, lots of stuff. So if you change that, but then it doesn't get enacted because there's only two towns in and two towns out for the pre-K 6, pre-K 12, it makes no sense. Like, all the financing and the governance doesn't work for the configuration. So it seems like before it gets amended, you have to know that actually it can be amended by the participation. So, but thank you for the information.
Any follow-up?
No, that's enough.
Lawrence?
Yeah, just a couple of very quick questions. First, so if we vote to go forward tonight and create a committee that would then plan it, is there a timeframe in which we have to act?
Not really. I think that it would be worth thinking about creating a timeframe. It would be a likely requirement of the department, and it would be also wise for all of us, for our towns and the regional, current regional district, to make a decision by the end of any calendar year to take effect on July 1 of the next calendar year, which is the beginning of the next fiscal year. That is the provision in Chapter 71 for creation of a new district. And the reasons for doing so are because it's important for the progress of elementary and secondary education and for the district itself, for budgeting reasons and for the towns for budgeting reasons, to do so well in advance of the beginning of the fiscal year. And given the length of the process, I would hope that we would do it so that it would get to town meetings no later than the fall of the current year, 2014. But I think that would be a determination that you would need to make.
All right. I have a quick follow-up, and it's just a quick follow-up about Mohawk. You made a reference at the beginning that this proposal resembles an arrangement that Mohawk now has. Do they have the shared superintendency portion of this?
They do, and that is a very different, very interesting region because I think that they have a number of those small towns in northern Franklin County, and two of the towns, Paulion, Charlemont, share an elementary school, and they are a district unto themselves, and then Row has a different district. And I think that Mr. Buonacanti is the superintendent for all of those elementary schools, including Charlemont and Row, and for all of the schools that are formerly a part of the Mohawk region.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Dan?
Okay. So, thank you, Andy. I also want to just extend my appreciation for all the work and all the work everyone else on the committee has done for this. I think it's been great that we have people who would dedicate so much time to it. So, I have a bunch of questions, but I'll try to limit them. So, I'm trying to understand, I didn't really understand what Michael was talking about, about, I mean, having not, not being so close to this process, sometimes you guys are saying things that are a little confusing to me. But just so I understand, it seems like, okay, it's now completely clear to me that if two towns opt out, it's a done deal. That's a correct statement, right? There's nothing, it can't happen. It has to be at least three towns, and one of those towns has to be Amherst.
That was a determination that was made by the Regional School District Planning Board, yes.
Oh, by the, the planning board made that determination?
Yes. We made that planning, and that was incorporated in the motion, so that when I had my conversation with Ms. Lynch, it was, would Dassie consider a mechanism that would allow us to effectuate the motion as passed? And that was the motion that was passed.
Okay. And so that's really the only motion we, as a regional school committee, are voting on, is that it has to be three or nothing? Is that a correct statement?
Michael?
I think the only twist with that would be is if, just say, two voted to be in pre-K 12 and two voted to only be pre-K 6, it would have to, the concept would have to be floated with Dassie again. And who does that, and what they say, sort of opens up a can of worms. So for practicality's sake, that's probably what you said is true.
Okay. So can I then follow up? So what, if anything, has to be done about the union agreement? Is there any sort of vote that needs to be taken on the union with Pelham and Amherst to get out of the union, or is that not necessary?
Actually, I'll defer to Mr. DeCher.
So, it's actually longstanding law, so it's not the recent change. The recent change of the last few years was having a superintendent seem to stay intact and withdrawing, but for Union 26, you could just disband the region. So both school committees, you know, the three members and three member representatives could vote to dissolve the union, and then Union 26 would be dissolved. Union 28's different. Union 28, depending on if it was Shute-Sprayer or Leverett, or Shute-Sprayer and Leverett, the school committees by majority of vote would vote to withdraw, and then it would be effective within that fiscal year.
Okay. So can I ask, sorry, one more follow-up? So, when you're talking about shared superintendency services, are you talking about a union?
No. I mean...
No. I don't want to speak for everyone on the board, but I, when I think of the superintendency, I am not thinking of a union, no.
The, I think the concept, at least the way it was initiated, was if you had a region and you had one town who was not participating in the pre-K 12, that you would have a pre-K 12 region that was sort of ill-formed, it's an L, and then you had a carve-out pre-K 6, and so it was a separate district, but they were both, every district needs to have some superintendency, so that they would both be using the same central office, but it wouldn't be defined as a superintendency-union, which is a whole statutory definition. And I would just, the Muni Relief Bill of like three years ago basically codified what has been in practice apparently in the state for a long time, where different regions or districts and regions or unions and unions are sharing superintendents. So it was practically happening where you're getting shared central offices, shared superintendents. So it's allowable in all those configurations as of a few years ago.
Okay. So now, just a statement, that I'm in support of this, but I'm, I have to be honest, I'm not really in support of this idea of the shared superintendency services. I feel like part of the reason we started down this road in the first place was to simplify the role of our current central office. I mean, they've got three districts right now, they've got three budgets, they've got, you know, three different reports that go to the state, and I really thought that one of our goals was to simplify that. And to me, that idea of a shared superintendency services kind of flies in the face of it. So I just wanted to put that out there as a statement.
You want to respond, Andy, before I go to Catherine?
So, I just want to point out, because I think it can be a conclusion, that this amendment that we're voting is not voting for a shared superintendency. What it's saying is...
No, I know.
Right. So, so some, potentially some teacher-school committee...
Could consider.
But I just want to...
Yeah, now I got that. Thank you.
Something that we've been talking about for a long time.
Deb, did you want to add something?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Alexa? Shabazz? Alexa?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thanks, Andy. You said that you guys don't have any more money, yet there is money that's going to need to be spent. Because there's no way we could take this on without someone getting paid to do something, unless Michael's going to just volunteer all of this time, all of this.
So I think that the major area in which I can see that there would be some additional money being spent is with the actual drafting of the amendments to the regional agreement. We did have an agreement with Jenny Tate, who's also, of course, your attorney, and we have a leftover amount of work that Ms. Tate, I think, would be, is committed to do on behalf of the Regional School District Planning Board. It is probably not enough hours to cover what would be needed to take what she did already with the PK 6 region when we talked about it last summer, and then transfer it into an amendment to the regional agreement. So I imagine that that would be the larger part of the cost. It is possible that something like some additional financial analysis might be required with some outside assistance that's not entirely been clear. Mr. Detwiler and his staff and Sandy Poehler, who's the finance director for the town of Amherst, have provided some really tremendous help to us, and that was, really allowed us to get by. And I think that, to a large extent, that since two of those three are employees of the region anyway, that they would be able to go forward without requiring too much additional, if any, assistance from a consultant.
Can I add something?
Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, yeah. I was just going to add something. So, I guess it was two years ago in the summer, the Regional School Committee released, I forget how much, but it was from a contingency fund, to pay for the Regional School District Planning Board process. And there was some discussion at that point of, you know, it's Regional School Committee funds going to this other body, which, you know, it made sense that we would support it for research purposes, but I think anything going forward is much more direct because if we're amending the regional agreement and this body is in charge of the regional agreement and the region, that it's really investing in ourselves in terms of if we're going to reconfigure. So if there was any objection or confusion about why it happened last time, which I think was totally legit, but it's all us looking at our own agreement and figuring out if we're going to retool it, what it's going to take, so. And there is, is it $50,000 this year every year?
There's $280,000 each year, and that's something that's been voted as a reserve as part of the appropriated budget, that this committee could choose to allocate to this if necessary. And again, internally, we would be, as we've been supporting all along, taking on some of the work. And quite honestly, the committee has done a substantial amount of work and has, I think, a great amount of expertise in terms of working on the different sections of a potential agreement. So really, I think it's like the legal review at the end is what I would see as a cost.
And so if, right now, this committee is going to vote whether they want to take on this.
Yes. Well, go ahead.
My question is, what would happen if we didn't? It would just all stop?
If we don't vote on this tonight, it's over.
So we would be just sending the message that we, as a body, don't want to be involved in this at all?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I just clarify? I mean, I think emotionally and energy-wise, that's true, just technically speaking. Andy laid out, there's two pathways, so you can create a new region or you can amend an existing region. So if we said we didn't want to do it, we're basically saying we don't want to amend the current regional agreement. Therefore, some body, i.e. the Regional School District Planning Board, has to create a new regional agreement for a new region, and then it would be up to that body of 12 people to continue the work. And if they wanted to, they could, or we could, and if not, it wouldn't go forward.
Okay. But that's basically what they've been doing for, you've been doing for two years.
Yeah, correct.
I mean, that road has already been gone, and it's circled back, and now it's here.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, exactly.
And then, and what you're offering, and sorry, because I haven't been involved in this at all, so I'm going to learn and curb here. So what, basically, what happened is, as you said, all of the same people are willing to be on the same committee if we want everyone to be on the committee, and so they'll come with all of the knowledge that they have gained over the past two years about all of these thorny issues that still need to be worked out. Because none of the thorny issues are worked out. I mean, this idea of the amending of the existing agreement, that's the major piece of progress besides all of the other things that everybody learned over the past two years, basically, coming to us now, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Maria.
But I think, I mean, I also don't want to speak for the committee, but I, the board, but I think the board did resolve a lot of thorny issues that will inform if the committee goes forward.
Okay. Like, formally resolved or whatever, because it's not written?
There is, there is existing language that could be used as a building block and foundation for further, further writing, if you will.
Yeah. Like, it's not starting from scratch?
No, no, not at all.
Okay. Thanks.
I mentioned the two biggest issues are governance and finance. And finance really has to do with how you set up an assessment formula and how we would do a formula that would work when some towns are participating for grades PK to 12 and possibility of one town not participating for those grades. And that was a lot of the work that was done, and when I was referring to what your business office staff did in conjunction with Mr. Poehler in assisting us, was they went to Mohawk, understood how the Mohawk formula worked, and then applied the Mohawk formula with several variations for us and helped us to conclude that it is possible to do this, that you can create an assessment formula that fairly addresses those issues. So a substantial amount of that work has been done, and the knowledge exists within the committee of the Regional School District Planning Board that did that. The slightly more contentious issue would probably be governance. There was a governance committee, and I think that Michael was a member of that committee, and they had some very difficult discussions that have gone on, and it has continued to be a more difficult topic. But they do, that committee did develop a tremendous base of information. There is one additional layer that I talked about with Ms. Lynch, and we've done a little bit of discussion with Mohawk about, and that is, if a town is not participating for grades PK to 6 but still has a member on the regional committee, do you have a mechanism within the regional agreement for nonparticipation on a segment of votes, or how is that handled? And that's something that we really need to get somebody through the committee that you designate, if you take this on, to really understand as an additional governance piece.
Michael?
Yeah, it's a great question. I just wanted to respond on a couple of points. I think both what Andy and Kip said and Maria said are somewhat accurate in that we did a lot of work this summer on a pre-K 6 region model, so there was work to be done. So there is sort of a baseline, but this is a different model. So I think Andy's point about governance is exactly right. So if you have four towns in for pre-K 6, you can potentially create a government structure that everyone agrees with, but when you have this other one, it's going to look different by definition, if not everyone's in equally. So even the places where we've done some work, there will be some adaptation that's necessary, and the finances in a similar way, although some of the numbers were crunched. There's other issues that, you know, I forget what our term was, but there, you know, there were the challenging issues, school closings and things like that, and some of that carries over. You know, the process doesn't really change, whether it's three towns or four towns. So there is, there's a lot of work that's happened, there's some foundation that's set up, but there's also work to be done because the model's different, and it's certainly the most complex of all the models. The other thing I would just say in terms of this committee and the Regional School District Planning Board as a group of 12, is that one would say, well, if you've built all this knowledge and you've been working together, why would you want to give it to the Regional School Committee who hasn't technically been involved in it, except through representation? And there's technical reasons for it, but I think it also, just because we're amending the agreement, there's a logic that makes sense. My personal sense is, I would, you know, I would differ with Andy, I would prefer to just appoint those 12 people who have had the two years, or, you know, 11 people who have had two years and one who has had a year of experience going forward. And so although this committee is responsible for saying, yes, we want to open up the regional agreement and consider it, and yes, if we so decided would approve something to forward to the towns for their vote, the in-between hard work can still get done by the same 12 people. It's not like people who have not been involved in the process who are on this committee would have to, like, figure all this out and gain knowledge. I think the whole idea is to just... I think the whole idea is to just sort of shift the accountability and the decision-making. So the same 12 people could work it out, report back. So there's not like, anyone has to worry about having to learn some of this really arcane stuff.
Right. Okay.
I think if I may just follow up on Michael, maybe even say the same thing, but just for emphasis, if anyone is concerned with us putting out, if you will, the task of revising the regional agreement to the regional school district planning board, no matter what they come up with, it has to come back here for our final decision, at which time, all kinds of questions can once again be asked. Plus, there are four members of this committee who are on the regional school district planning board. But I want to just support what Michael's saying, that after two years, it's not that we, that all of us, I think, are at the same level of understanding, but we've been there, we've gotten our hands dirty. I think we're fairly confident that we can move forward, but it'll come back here, no matter what. Deb?
So the one thing that does really concern me about this is, is you all have put in a lot of work already, a lot of work. And there's still a lot of work to be done. And it feels, at this point to me, fairly risky. And I'm wondering, one of the things that we had talked about at the beginning was having town forums to get feedback and get, you know, public perception on it. And it may have happened in other towns, but it, other than some initial one, maybe, it really hasn't happened in Pelham. So I'm just wondering if there's any sense from the committee who's been working on this for so long of how we could sort of gauge the feedback in the town or, you know, just gauge, try to get a sense for what the towns really would support before we put another year's worth of effort and money into this.
Deb, I'll answer for myself on that question. Leverett, we have not had forums. And my only excuse that I can come up with is simply, there wasn't time for the 12 people involved, given all that they are involved with, to pull off those forums in a timely manner. I think if, when we look back upon this and kind of evaluate the entire two-plus-years process, that may stand out as one of the most glaring issues that we didn't deal with properly. Having said that, there have been also, I think, at least in Leverett, there have been informal, I know in Shute's Berry had more formal mechanisms, but it's not as if we're not hearing from people. Not as much as I would like in Leverett, but we are hearing from people, mostly asking questions rather than stating opinions. But I must confess, it is an area that I know, I, as a Leverett rep, the three of us from Leverett could have done more to do that, but there just, there just wasn't time in our schedules to pull it off. That's as honest as I can get. Deb?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I know that it feels risky, as any vote of this kind would. And, but I do want to say, we did do some early public forums in Amherst and they were very poorly attended. And I think one of the things that I've learned from the board, being on the board in that regard, is that I would think that's part of the process going forward now would be to really get the information out to the public as much as we can through different modes. I mean, we've tried a lot, you know, we've had, we have a website, which has sort of fallen off a bit, but, you know, it's hard. And we've had newspaper articles. But certainly, you know, part of the process would be, I mean, I don't know if the forum, I don't know if the forum will be public forums, but certainly to get out into the public. And, because it's going to be a public vote.
Michael, you want to talk about Shute's Berry?
Yeah. So, I mean, Shute's Berry, I think, has walked the lightest in terms of this, you know, which has created ripples. But we've tried to get feedback. So in, let's see, we're in January. In the spring, we had a forum. We had a big turnout of probably 40, 50 people. And then on December 2nd, so in advance of the discussion on the 5th, we had a public forum. We probably had 40 people show up and it was a pretty robust conversation. The takeaway from, for the three of us, myself, Becky Torres, and William Player, was really that there was no consensus. There were some people who supported pre-K 12, some people who supported staying the way it is, some people supported in between. Lots of questions, not a lot of answers. And I think the thing that we got in the spring, and again now, which is what really sort of is important for this process is, until you have a regional agreement, people don't know what the rules are and what they're talking about. So what our experience was in the spring, we sort of said, we're coming to you, you know, fellow residents, with ideas. We don't know what it'll look like because this is the beginning of the process. And people said, we can't fully comment because we don't know what it looks like. It didn't really happen on December 2nd because it was laid out a little bit more. The details were still not there, but people gave us questions. But ultimately, it's a town vote. So just to clarify, I mean, we would vote if we wanted to, to start the process. Then there would be the work about putting a regional agreement. Then this body would have to vote to support that by two-thirds and vote to move it to town meetings. Then all four towns at town meeting have to vote to support it. So having a regional agreement that spells out, this is how financial assessments work and governance works, and if there was a school closing, how that would work, et cetera, et cetera, then people have everything they need. And I think if you were to, if one were to have a forum with that in place, you're talking facts. And the speculation goes away. And so there's a balance of getting input before you have that, but once you have it, it's a different conversation.
Thanks, Mike. Are there any other questions or comments that people wish to make? If not, before I ask for the motion, just want to ask Andy a clarifying question in terms of assuming the passage of this motion. We would need another motion to identify the regional school district planning board as the agent of the revision. Is that correct?
The members of the...
The members of the committee.
The members of the committee.
Members of the committee.
I think either, probably would need to do that as a part of the original motion or as a second motion, as you wish.
I just want to make sure that we were covering all our bases as we move forward. Then I will entertain someone to move the paragraph that you have in front of you, which begins to amend the current seven through 12 agreement. And goes on.
I'll do it.
You want me to read that?
I'll do it.
Go ahead, Michael, go ahead.
And can I, I'll add the, I'm fine with adding the people.
Do you have the wording for it already?
Yeah, we also have the people.
For a separate motion. I really don't support going back to the same board. So if you give me a clean motion of, you know, amending...
One and then the other?
I'll do the amending.
Okay.
Just so you, to clarify, this may be the right motion. This was the motion that was made by the regional school district planning board? So is that one okay? I had simply put it in.
It's the same one that's...
It's in the letter.
It's in the letter. It's the same one that's in the letter.
I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's the exact same one. Go ahead, Michael.
So I would move that the regional school committee work to amend the current seven-12 agreement to a pre-K 12 agreement with the option that one of the existing four towns can remain seven-12 as long as that town is not Amherst, and that the town that remains seven to 12 has the option to become a pre-K 12 member within a specified period of time, and that the town that remains seven-12 can negotiate with the regional school committee regarding shared superintendent services for their pre-K six school.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lawrence? Seconds? Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as read by Michael and as it appears before you on the page in front of you, as well as in the letter to Ms. Lynch, please raise your hand. Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Shabazz, did I hear you, that you wanted to make another motion?
No, I was not in favor of it being rolled into...
Michael, do you want to move that?
Sure.
You indicated that you wanted to list the names, which...
Right. I mean, that would be, I can move it and then it either not get seconded or voted down.
Go ahead.
So I would move that the committee that we, that the regional school committee appoint to develop a regional agreement to reflect this motion would be...
Excuse me, Michael. Can I ask you to change the word "develop" to revise?
Revise, sure. I'm in.
You okay with that?
Sure.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
To revise the regional agreement per the concept in the prior motion, would be the 12 individuals that are currently serving on the regional school district planning board, who are Andy Steinberg, Catherine Appley, and Alyssa Brewer for Amherst, Anne Delano, Kip Funch, and Julie Shivey for Leverett, Trevor Baptiste, Jeff Isman, and Mark Santos for Pelham, and Elaine Palio, Becky Torres, and myself, Michael DeCirio, for Shute's Berry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Catherine, seconds? Is there discussion?
Yes.
Shabazz?
I think that group, you know, put up all this years of work, really think we ought to rethink having to just continue that. I don't understand why we can't simply ask the superintendent to work with our attorney to come up with a revised agreement, bring it back to this body and let us discuss it and tweak it, and then see how we can move it forward to the towns or whatever else the process becomes.
Any other comment?
I'll just respond. Yeah, I, that to me would be massively insufficient. You know, despite Maria being competent and Cindy Tate being competent, the people on the committee represent the towns and, you know, it's not the superintendent's job or the attorney's job to sort of represent the towns, nor do I think they can. And I think what we've discovered in two years is that there's strong feelings about certain things that are town-based and there's perspectives that if you don't live in that town, you don't see. So, you know, I think part of the relationship building that's occurred over the two years is, you know, say for example, Shute's Berry saying, this really matters to our town, and Amherst going, oh, okay, we maybe don't see it or maybe don't agree, but we now hear it. And I don't think that can be happening in the role with two professionals who are not representing the towns.
You see, and I disagree with that, with that way of thinking about it. The way I see it here is we're in a whole nother framework now. We're in a framework of revising our existing agreement. An agreement that we are all here constituted by that agreement as a board. Okay? I think that the issues are out there. The discussions have already happened. We're quite well aware. We've just got to put something on the table now. Okay? Something that spells out the assessment formulas, whether Amherst, as I recall from certain meetings, is just probably going to be paying more, you know, than we're already paying now, or whatever it is, but put out what the formula, put something on the table for us in terms of a form. Governance, all of this, you know, one person, one vote, and what does it come down to? If we're going to have a certain size board and Amherst's votes are going to count more than the other members' vote? Put something down. And the opt-out clause, if there's going to be some kind of opt-out clause, if ever an elementary school was threatened with closing, that there's some sort of, put something down or not that answers that. And come back to this body, we look at it, and then it's going to have all of the robust forums and robust things that people can tweak around. We've, you know, we're just, otherwise, I just think we're going to be continuing to sort of dance around and dance around and, you know, and just die by inertia.
Well, can I, just a quick one?
One more time and then I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to talk. Go ahead, Michael.
I think when it goes to the town meetings, there won't be a chance to tweak. I mean, our experience in the last two years is that there'll be something in an original agreement. People might comment in each town, will probably have different comments, and so it might be a retooling. But I think, for me, if we're going to engage on this, the idea would be to have success at the end. And since any one town voting against it will kill it, and we've seen that in the 90s, that it's better to have, I think in any process, it's better to have the input on the front end from the people who are voting so that you're constructing it in a way that has a better chance of reflecting the interest and therefore get voted for, as opposed to going through a process, maybe abbreviated from two years to maybe one, but then have one town say, we're not doing it, and then it dies on the vine and it will not come back. So to me, it's more an investment on the front end of saying, can we get the input that we need? I mean, if we did it the other way, and I was Maria, and, you know, I would say, I want to have everyone at the table to hear it so I can sort of package it anyway. So it's, you're sort of recreating that process underneath Maria because I wouldn't want to be in your seat just thinking it up. And I don't think it would fly. So that, I'm looking at it from a success of four towns voting for something at the end. And that's how I think we would get there.
Other comments for and against Deb?
So I completely understand where Shabazz is coming from on this. And I'm wondering if maybe a compromise might be a smaller committee? That it's a smaller version of what we have now? Because I think sometimes with fewer people, you can act, operate more quickly. You know, we used to say that in grad school, that the length of time it took us to complete a project was, you know, a multiplication of the number of people on the team who was working on it. So I would throw that out there as a possibility of just maybe compressing the size of it.
Catherine?
Yeah, I can appreciate what both Debbie and Shabazz are saying. And I think that if I were not on the board, I can imagine how you would, you know, from the outside, viewing it in this way, it does, it's been a long process. But fewer people actually would just make that much more work than people on the board. I mean, there's an enormous amount of work that has to be done. And the fact, and everybody's a volunteer. And everybody, at this point, over the two years, we've all been on subcommittees, so we all have areas of, I don't know if you'd say expertise, but certainly we are more familiar with some aspects of this as opposed to others. And it's actually a really, really complex process. And I was thinking actually that we might add people to the process because I actually think it would make it go more quickly. Because we would literally have more people doing the work. So, and I, you know, and I've worked in teams that have slowed up and I always think, oh, I'd do this so much faster by myself. This is not one of those times.
Anyone hasn't spoken yet?
I was also going to say that I don't know, you know, if it's been two years since that committee was created, that there might be people out there who would add something to it, maybe a little bit of, not that you're not doing awesome work, but new energy or some new ideas to get to the finish line. And if we, does this motion preclude that?
No.
Well, the current one does.
Well, but it doesn't, it doesn't preclude doing something after a decision is made about this motion?
Yeah, I don't know if you guys, or if you guys feel like...
In anticipation of that, I was, I am going to ask, depending upon the outcome of this motion, for direction from the school committee regarding what Catherine was referring to about additional members. I was going to ask for direction from the committee. Michael?
Yeah, the only thing I would say, the only person that's come in halfway is Mark Santos from Pelham. He came in, I think, a year into the process. And, you know, he's not here, but I know I'm talking to...
Yes.
Oh, Mark, can you share your learning curve? It would be helpful. Sorry, I didn't see you right there.
Come on up to the microphone.
Just saving from talking for you.
Hi, I'm Mark Santos from Pelham, and I am the newest member of the, of the committee. All I can tell you is that every single meeting is a brand-new learning curve. Every time you think you have one idea that's in concrete, then other people come in and add to the process and it changes. But I think the more that I see it changing, the stronger and more refined that it gets. It's very frustrating even for me when I first started, that when we thought we went over a governance issue and it was clear, to find that maybe six weeks later, it's no longer clear. I can see how, you know, you, looking from the outside, it seems like we're not getting a lot done. But these people have done so much in the time that they've had, they started from scratch. I mean, the stuff that Andy's been doing is just remarkable. We're real close. I mean, I think that, you know, we're very, very close. I think like Catherine said, maybe a few more people in certain areas of expertise might help. But it's something that we just, right now, really need to stick together on because I think that we're close. And I think in Pelham, there are a lot of people that I've talked to who before were very much against this, and they've changed. Even in the last couple of months, I'm really surprised. But they don't come to the forums. I don't think we had, what, 25 people show up to our forum? Really? And the 25 people are people that I knew. But all the other people that have kids, they don't come. And so what's going to happen is, we're going to come to an agreement, we're going to have a forum, and then we're going to vote. And about a week before the voting, all these people are going to come out of the woodwork and say, what is going on here? And I'm already to say to them, where were you the last two years? All these meetings are... years? All these meetings are, they're publicized, they're on the website, they're in the newspaper. You know, where were you? So, you know, I really wish that, you know, you'd kind of give us, just give us a little more time. And I, I think you'd be surprised in the outcome because we're, I think we're really close. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other remarks?
A question.
Yes, Shabazz?
So basically, only Amherst. Will it be put on a ballot for all of the citizens of our town? The rest of you, it's by your town meetings?
No, none. The process would, in the current process with the board, it was required.
No, no, no. I'm saying to get a decision from your towns, is it going to be a ballot measure of all the people in your towns or is it going to be just your town meeting?
If you're timing an election.
That won't be the case in Amherst.
Yeah, it will.
With the amendment, when you amend, it'll be...
But Desi will take a decision by our town meeting here.
Yes.
For, if, in the timeline, oh, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
The timeline that, depending on how much work gets done and how quickly, the timeline would be the, potentially the fall town meeting, which would then be a July one, the following July one starting, which is you need a whole year. Really, you need the time to do the transition planning of the districts to, you know, the finances and all the data reports and such. So the timeline works.
That changes things a little bit for me.
Yeah.
Andy?
Yeah, I, just to follow up for Mr. Shabazz, the other three towns, of course, have open town meetings. So all of the citizens of the town who are registered voters are members of the town meeting and can attend the town meeting and participate. And that's why in the creation of a new region, Chapter 71 had to think about, the legislature had to think about, well, what about the towns that have a representative town meeting where not all of the voters are members? And they came to the conclusion that under that circumstance, a vote would be required of the entire town since the town meeting doesn't serve that purpose as it does in Schutzbury, for example. The, by turning this over to an amendment to the regional agreement, we're no longer going by Chapter 71. We're going by the terms of our current regional agreement. And our current regional agreement provides that in all four towns, it is the town meeting that can take the vote. In Amherst, there is a provision within the Town Government Act that if there's enough signatures on a petition after town meeting to require a vote, then it has to go to a vote of the entire town. And I think that the regional agreement actually incorporates that process into the regional agreement so that it could end up to a vote of all of the voters in Amherst, but only if it first of all passed or, and so that there was something to contest. And then enough people asked for by petition, a town-wide vote, then it would be required.
Thank you, Andy. I'm not hearing any more questions or remarks. I'm going to ask for a vote. Michael?
I don't think it was seconded yet.
Excuse, Catherine, would you mind repeating your motion, please? I want to make sure, this is really important, if you don't mind.
I will try. I moved that the Regional School Committee appoint a committee to work on amending the regional agreement to reflect the concept put forth in our prior motion. Does that work, Debbie, if I just referenced the prior motion? To include the, the 12 following individuals. Andy Steinberg, Catherine Appy, and Alyssa Brewer for Amherst, Anne Delano, Kip Funch, and Julie Shivey for Leverett, Trevor Baptiste, Jeff Eisman, and Mark Santos for Pelham, Elaine Palio, Becky Torres, and Michael DeCirio for Schutzbury.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Sure.
I could read the, the wording that I had put. My wording's just slightly different from yours.
Okay.
I don't have the...
Revised.
What I said is move that the Regional School Committee appoint to revise the regional agreement per the prior motion and appoint the current members of the Regional School District Planning Board and then list...
Sure, I'm not attached. I don't know if amended and revised makes a difference.
I don't know if it matters.
Mr. Lawyer, do you know?
Amending generally means, I think, to, to add to as opposed to changing something.
Okay, I'm good with revised.
It works, right?
Anyway, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Abstentions? So the vote is five, six, zero, one. Thank you very, very much. I'm going to ask Andy if the next time the Regional School District Planning Board meets, if one of the items on its agenda would be a discussion about additional members for purposes of assisting in revising the regional agreement.
Uh, yes, can put that on the agenda. And just for people who haven't participated in the polling for dates, the two dates that we're looking at right now are January 29th and February 5th. And so I was hoping that we can meet on one of those two dates.
Thank, thank you very, very much, Andy. You've taken a lot of your time this evening. I really appreciate it. Thank you very, very much.
And thank you for all of the support that all of you have provided for this process going forward. And I really look forward to the next stage. So thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy. Good night. I'm going to come back to the superintendent. You distributed your updates. Did you want to comment on any of these?
I think from the committee, there might be some that we want to just note because they're important things that are coming up in the community. So I'll just touch on a few that others may want to speak to. A few I wanted to mention that Barry Brooks stopped in today to our office and he shared that the Human Rights Commission, Amherst Area, NAACP, and the Leverett Peace Commission will present a reading of Project Unspeakable by Court Dorsey, Stephen Waugh, and Debbie Lyngale. The performance will focus on the assassinations of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., John F. Kennedy, Malcolm X, and John F., Robert F. Kennedy, excuse me. The performance is directed by Ingrid Askew and it'll take place Friday, this Friday, the 17th, at the middle school. And the reading will begin at seven o'clock. And they're asking for a $10 donation, which would be greatly appreciated.
I think it should also be pointed out, I believe that one of our members is...
Yeah, that's...
In fact, that's why I'm late.
Thespein onstage for this.
There was rehearsal over at the middle school.
I thought, do you want to make any?
You've said it all. It's, I think it was a really, the whole, we filled up the town meeting space in Leverett, which is the elementary school and on the, on the 50th anniversary of John F. Kennedy's assassination back in November. And so it's kind of spreading it around, sharing it now with the town of Amherst. And hopefully we can get a good turnout as well. I think you'll enjoy the play.
Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Shabazz.
We also want to mention that the 30th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Breakfast will be held on Saturday, the 18th, at the middle school cafeteria, nine through twelve, uh, nine o'clock to 12 o'clock. Public's invited to attend and celebrate with our students and community member who embody peace, uh, service and peace. The mission of the Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Breakfast is to promote peace, justice, and racial harmony, to really honor the life of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. So we're hoping people will come to that as well and join, join us. And I think, I mean, just, do people, is there anything else that people want to make sure I'm mentioning tonight? There's a lot of good information here, but it'll go up on the website. Are we all okay? Because I just want to, don't want to use our time unnecessarily.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to jump back to item number three, the subcommittee updates. Rick unfortunately is under the weather this morning, today rather, and is unable to attend tonight. So I'm going to skip over that one. The Budget Subcommittee did meet last week. We will be meeting again next week. At our last meeting, the focus of the conversation was on capital project planning. That was kind of a dress rehearsal for what was to have been a community-wide discussion this past Saturday morning, but the ICE intervened.
Yes, it did.
And so that larger group meeting has to be rescheduled. The Budget Subcommittee is meeting again tentatively for this coming Tuesday.
It's supposed to happen. Is it Tuesday?
It's Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday, 5:30.
Tonight didn't happen. Oh, jeez, okay. Sorry.
The Collaborative met last Wednesday and had a very lengthy discussion regarding the selection of a new director of the Collaborative. The focus of the discussion was the, the search committee came before the large, the Board of Governors, Board of Directors with a intent to submit just one name for the director. That was met with considerable resistance and voted down. And they were asked to return on the 22nd with more than one candidate. So on the 22nd of January, Wednesday, the 22nd, the Collaborative will interview X number of finalists for, to replace Dr. Jones Schuman as Executive Director of the Collaborative for Educational Services. And that was pretty much the focus of the conversation. That took us quite a while to deal with that issue. And I think that that's it for Subcommittee Updates. We do have some gifts that we need to approve, correct?
Yes.
I don't think that was in the...
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, from the back, I'm sorry, right. So I would entertain a motion, these are all Regional School Committee gifts, I would entertain a motion to accept the two gifts that are listed on the back page of your packet.
Debbie?
Deb?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Marshall and Annie Jones for the James Faison Scholarship Fund. Did I pronounce that right?
Faison.
Faison, sorry. James Faison Scholarship Fund for $250. And another generous donation from F.L. Roberts Exxon Mobile Education Grant to assist in the promotion of high school math and science for $500.
Second. Lawrence, seconds. Sorry. I wasn't sure if we had to have the total in that motion. Do we have to have the total? No, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Deb.
Can I ask?
Yeah, Lawrence, go ahead, please.
Quick question. I'm sorry, I had to step out for a minute. When you talked about the update for the Collaborative, did you have a chance to mention that there were new articles of agreement that will have to come back to every member committee?
Oh, no, I didn't mention that. You want to talk about that?
Well, sure. It was my first meeting, so it was a very interesting experience. So my understanding is that the Massachusetts Legislature General Court passed a law. I don't know the circumstances of what prompted the law, but they passed the...
Corruption.
Corruption, yeah. Well, I figured it was what was going on in north of Boston. But anyway, so that all collaboratives had to redraw their agreements, their member agreements, and they tightened up certain parts of it that necessitate, well, that will help eliminate corruption or any sort of malfeasance. So what is the case that I think all of us and all of our committees have to have in mind is that every member and non-member, every school committee, and I believe there's 35, 36, have to take a vote sometime, I think between now and June?
Between now and the end of the, no, the end of, actually the end of the calendar year.
End of the calendar year, looking over the agreement and agreeing to them. We have to take a vote on accepting the new articles of agreement. So it's something that I think other committee members will want to put on there.
All the individual committees will have to do it.
Yeah, all three.
And we asked that copies of the agreement be sent to you as kind of a, you know, flag to put it on the agenda sometime between now and the end of December.
And the chairs as well. So you should be getting, as well as Maria.
Question?
Yep.
So that new articulation has been produced?
It has, yes.
Yes, okay. And...
I'm happy to get you a copy if you...
I guess, be coming to us.
Sorry, I apologize. Are you saying by the end of June?
I thought it was by the end of June, but I guess it was probably by the calendar year.
I thought it was by the end of the year. There was some question as to whether or not it could all, everybody could vote on it that quickly by the time they got it out.
Okay.
But when you get the copy of the agreement, that would probably indicate...
Yeah.
Okay.
They did want it expedited. I know that. They wanted to.
Okay. Thank you. We'll keep talking about it.
Anything else? Michael?
Is there a date for the next four-town budget meeting?
In February, I believe.
February.
February 8th.
Whatever that first Saturday is, I think.
That'll be a fun day.
Debbie, do you, is, has the town, have the towns been notified with that?
I don't think so.
I have not notified the towns, so I'm guessing they haven't.
That's a good point, Michael. Thank you.
So that's going to be...
Is that what it is?
That's what Ron, that was...
Yeah. I don't have my book with me, Michael, but I'm pretty sure it's that first Saturday.
Thank you.
Oh, that wouldn't be the first Saturday.
The first Saturday is the first, and I don't think it's supposed to be...
I don't think we confirm then.
Okay, so we're...
No.
I may have to warn that.
Are we able to go?
We're going to do the budget presentation here.
The Canes Nation is playing. I wanted to catch the end.
Okay. I got the hint. Is there any other, oh, we do need to look at the calendar. I'm sorry, very quickly.
We put a revised calendar.
Calendar for the 28th.
Can we put it in there already? When we're revised?
Yes. In the Google Docs is a revised calendar. So I can just say that we will, that at our next joint meeting, we'll have the policy discussion and we also will be having a look at the FY15 budget. And I think that's all I have to say.
That should be enough.
Someone has to go watch a game. Okay?
Yes.
Excellent.
May I entertain a, Deb?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask for. A second, very quickly. All those in favor, raise your hand when we are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.